Good morning, everyone. We'll call the February 3rd, 2015 meeting of the Jackson City Council of Order. And we'll ask Councilmember David Sisco to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
All right, women, please. I do have my Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the many blessings that you give each one of us, Father. We ask you, David, your Father, to be with the mayor and his council. We make decisions that affects everybody in the city of Jackson, Father.
Yes, Father.
We ask you to give us wisdom and knowledge to do the right things, Father. Father, we thank you for the city employees and the work that they do for us, and we thank you for the department heads and their directions to get things done for us, Father.
Yes.
Father, we want to ask you to be with our leaders of this great nation, ask you to help them to do the things to bring peace across the world, Father. Just also to ask you to be with the men and women who are protecting the freedoms for us, Father, here in our country and other lands. Just ask you to keep them safe and comfort them, Father. Father, most of all, we thank you for your love and for Christ's love and the sacrifice that He gave for us to have the afterlasting life with you. Father, we thank you for all these things, and forgive us of our sins, in Christ's name. Amen.
My name is... ......................................................
Okay, Mr. Nita, I think you can show all council members present and at the board approval minutes. January 6th, 2015, City Council meeting, and if there are no additions or corrections to those minutes, no objection, we'll go ahead and approve those that submitted. Item five is the invitation to public comment. If there's anyone present who would like to make a comment under new business, if you'll let it be known, then we'll be happy to call on you. Okay, Will, when we get to that item under new business, I'll be happy to call if you'll raise your hand. We have no proclamations this morning, we have no first readings, and we have no second readings. Item nine under new business, a presentation by the NAACP in support of the use of body cameras for the Jackson Police Department. Anyone present? Good morning. If you would, just introduce yourself for the record, if you would.
I'm Dan Hoyt, Byron Elem. My name is Dan Hoyt, I'm the political action chair for the Jackson-Madison County NAACP. And last summer, the events in Ferguson showed how quickly any community can be swept up in distrust, and in a lot of ways Ferguson is similar to Jackson. So it was easy to be concerned that something like that could happen here. Jackson has a lot of problems with crime. Some of that comes from distrust between the community and the police. Not the black community, not the white community, but the community as a whole. The idea that citizens should be afraid to talk to the police even in instances where they believe they are being responsible is shameful. These body-worn cameras won't solve all of our problems. Crime will still happen. What they will do is improve the interaction between the police and the community. I had seen video of police departments using the cameras and talking about how effective they were. Our branch realized the potential and knew it was time to bring this technology to Jackson. Police Chief Tony Farrar of Rialto, California, said after purchasing the cameras, they had an 88 percent drop in officer complaints, which accompanied a 60 cents percent drop in use of force. He said, "Think of all the man-hours you can save, the time that your investigators can save on investigating all these cases. Quite frankly, money can be better spent with the officers out on the street. The savings that we will have will easily outweigh the cost of the equipment." I think you really have to ask yourself, as a police chief, if you can afford not to do something like this. At the end of the day, the police will have more evidence, which is never a bad thing, from a law enforcement perspective. We're proud that the city is giving Chief Weiser and the Jackson Police Department the opportunity to take advantage of this technology, and we hope our community will take advantage of this opportunity to rebuild trust in our law enforcement.
My name is Byron Elem, and I'm the third vice president of the Jackson-Madison County Branch of the NAACP. This effort of equipping the police officers of Jackson, Tennessee with body cameras was initiated by the local Jackson-Madison County Branch of the NAACP. The members of the branch voted some months ago to pursue the use of body cameras in our community in order to produce more accountability and transparency in interactions between police officers and citizens. Our desire for the use of body cameras is not the result of our distrust or antipathy for law enforcement officers, but merely our yearning to bolster our community with an increased presence of clarity and fairness. As statistics and testing unequivocally suggest, the employment of body-worn cameras protects not only civilians but also police officers. We wholeheartedly support police officers. Even our own branch president, Mr. Hal Carter, is a former police officer. We want to ensure that proper precautions are taken to protect both citizens and law enforcement officers, and that systems are in place to ensure the proper application of justice and accountability when either parties behave inappropriately. We would like to thank Mayor Gist and Chief Weiser, who are both very eager to meet with us and hear our concerns. We thank them for expressing their support of body cameras and their willingness to facilitate such an action. We sincerely appreciate their openness and responsiveness. The NAACP genuinely aims to pursue and ultimately secure justice, equality, and fairness for all people. We earnestly feel, and empirical evidence suggests, that the use of body cameras is utterly consistent with such goals. With the use of body cameras, we are helping to make Jackson a more just and equitable place to live, and ultimately, a better place to live. Again, we thank Mayor Gist and Chief Weiser for their support and speedy action. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Chief Michael, Chief Weiser's... Okay, would you mind coming up and just briefing the council on where we are? We had an opportunity, what, a couple of months ago, guys, to meet with you all in the conference room, and they made a presentation to me, and something we've been looking at and working on for several months, but I thank you all for doing that. So Chief, if you'd mind just bringing us up to date on where we are and where we're going.
Yes, sir. We have cameras already in our cars. There's, I think, five or six cameras in each of our cars that are made by Panasonic. And we had the Panasonic rep come up, the mayor was there, Chief Weiser was there, I was there, several from within the department. This thing is in production, with us looking at getting demos hopefully as early as April, and then these things actually coming into production and being available to us hopefully in June. The good thing about this technology is that it will tie directly in and sync directly with the equipment that we've already purchased that's in our cars and the backend software that we have to use to view this video. So I think it's going to be very beneficial. It's going to go right along with all of the equipment that we already have in the cars, and there won't be any additional cost for the software. And these are... The cameras in our cars are top-quality. I think this is going to be top-quality equipment.
Chief, you might correct me if I'm wrong, and in that presentation about Panasonic, obviously, it's using the latest in technology as far as body cams and...
Yes, sir.
I think the command staff and NYPD prefers to get the latest in technology because it changes every day, and hopefully, that latest in technology will last us several years. But again, the key is that we have existing software to... In order to utilize these cameras, and again, I think the projection, the date, would be several trial cameras to come in, maybe during March or April. We'll put those to use and make sure they're what we're looking for, and then I think Panasonic is planning on full production in June.
That's correct.
So with any luck, before we start the next fiscal year, we'll have those cameras outlined, and the cost of them, as total to us by the rep, would be anywhere from $700 to $1,000 per camera.
That's correct.
And I think we're initially... Did we sign on a number that we need 70? Was that...
Seventy, seventy-five, something in that area to cover officers working in special areas and on the shifts as well.
And those would be rechargeable as officers come in, they simply slip them into rechargeable pack and be ready for the next roll call shift. So that's kind of where we stand. Any council have any questions or stories? This is ongoing, and we fully expect to bring a recommendation back to council for a purchase of those body cams. And as these gentlemen alluded to, it's a picture's worth a thousand words, and it will certainly reinforce our police officers and also reinforce the public as to what exactly takes place in an event. Any questions, council?
Oh, Mayor, I'd just like to say I think these cameras, along with the other cameras that we're having around our city, will be another tool that we have to let people know that we're trying to make our city a better place.
That's correct.
And help our community continue to work with us.
That's right.
And thank the post department for what you do. It's real tough out there sometimes, but the last couple of years, y'all have been working real hard. I said you not had no problem here, but trying to build that relationship between our community and our post department.
We appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your advocacy for the body cams. Thanks, Chief. Anyone else who wants to be heard on this particular item? Item two is a consideration of resolutions supporting Governor Bill Haslam's Insure Tennessee Plan, submitted by Councilman Ernest Brooks II. Councilman?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I come before you this morning to ask for your support of the resolution before you, urging the Tennessee General Assembly to enact Governor Bill Haslam's Insure Tennessee Plan. As you are aware, the governor kicked off his statewide tour promoting the plan here in Jackson. To be perfectly clear, and the governor has reiterated, the program is not Obamacare, but an alternative to the traditional Medicaid expansion under the Affordable Care Act. Insure Tennessee promotes personal responsibility, addresses costs, and will provide health care to more than 280,000 uninsured Tennesseans and over 39,000 veterans. This number includes the working poor, many of whom live here in Madison County. During the governor's visit, West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation President Bobby Arnold said that 10% of their patients did not have any health insurance during 2014. Also, the cost of the unreimbursed care provided to Medicare and Ten Care patients totaled $25 million and $18 million respectively. These losses were shifted to patients who had commercial insurance. Insure Tennessee is a two-year pilot program that consists of two plans, the Volunteer Plan and Healthy Incentives Plan. The Volunteer Plan would allow working individuals to have vouchers that could be used for health insurance. The Healthy Incentives Plan offers incentives for not using the emergency room, for non-emergencies, and rewards healthy behaviors. Those who qualify make more money than those who are eligible for Ten Care, which currently assists the state's poorest residents. To its critics, the program will not create any new taxes for Tennesseans and will not add any additional cost to the state budget. A recent study found that the plan would bring more than 15,000 new jobs and over $1.14 billion to the state. Once the federal match decreases below 100%, Tennessee hospitals have committed to covering the state's portion of the cost. Tennessee can terminate the program if the federal government changes payment ratio or hospitals decide that they could not afford the 10% contribution. In answer to the critics who fear Tennessee would be on the hook to pay for coverage because they argue that it's illegal to take people off the health care rolls after they've been included, a recent Tennessee Attorney General opinion and the head of the federal Health Department say that that's not the case. Of course, the program has its political detractors, and a robust debate and vote is anticipated during the special session called for by the governor. As a matter of fact, it's probably going on now. However, the plan's supporters include but are not limited to Coalition for a Healthy Tennessee, Tennessee Medical Association, Tennessee Hospital Association, West Tennessee Healthcare, the Tennessee Justice Center, our city and county mayor, as well as both our U.S. Senators Lamar Alexander and Bob Corbett. I commend Governor Haslam for his leadership and vision, and for deciding to place the welfare of the citizens of Jackson and the citizens of the great state of Tennessee over partisan politics. The Bible tells us, "Whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." So today, I challenge the Jackson City Council to send a message to the Tennessee General Assembly, to have the courage to choose ideas over ideology, hope over hopelessness, and finally, and most importantly, people over party. As a council, let our voices represent the voiceless. So today, I ask you to support the resolution that is before you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I know council has appointed Councilman Sisco as our liaison to the West Tennessee Healthcare Board, and Councilman Sisco, would you like to follow up on that?
Yes, Mayor, I sure would. I've been on the liaison to the board for the last three and a half years. I've attended probably 95% of them, able to attend about 95% of their meetings. And ladies and gentlemen, all I can say is I am totally impressed with the way Mr. Arnold and this board works. They're constantly looking for ways to improve health care for the people of Jackson-Madison County and West Tennessee, and then trying to work with the mechanisms of finances to survive. We've had, I know of three, at least three hospitals close by here in West Tennessee that closed down. This hospital here in Jackson-Madison County, it takes care of the engine where they're supposed to. It's owned by us, the city and the county. And so if the means are not met financially, then we're going to have to do it. But thank goodness, this board has worked so hard to try to make the ends meet, to provide product, first-class care, that we're working pretty good here in Madison County and Jackson. Now, I have an old saying, "Pay me now or pay me later." That's exactly what this kind of boils down to. Somebody's got to pay. And when people go to the hospital, they've got to be cared for, whether they have insurance or not. And then Jackson-Madison County General Hospital is the place they have to go. So this resolution and this deal that the governor is bringing, I totally support it 100% with all the information I've been able to receive from this board here in Jackson-Madison County. So I encourage also the members of the city council to approve this.
Okay, thank you, council. Anyone else that would like to speak in support or in opposition to the passage of this Okay, Councilman Brooks, I assume by virtue of you bringing the resolution forward, that's in form of a motion?
Second.
Or a second?
Second.
Any discussion from council?
Well, the only thing I want to say is, you know, I don't know if this is a good idea or not. I have no idea. I've read through the legislation. I don't understand it. I'll be the first to say that. Mr. Brooks is a lawyer, and he has certainly cleared up a lot of points for me and did a wonderful job. I have no idea how my constituents feel about it. I know there's a lot of opposition, and there's a lot of support. However, I think that rather than me being undecided, and I think most of our state senators and state representatives say that they are, I do think the fact that it will help our hospital here in our community is enough to tip the scales. So that's why I want to support it.
Any other council member? If not, we have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Council. Item three, under new business, is consideration of transfer of 427 Princeton Street to Aspel Recovery Center. We have the director here of the Aspel Center. If you would come up, sir. Stan, you want to go ahead and brief the council?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Good morning. It is very rewarding when you can be a part of a win-win situation, and it's even more rewarding when you can be a part of a win-win-win situation in this case. I feel like this is a win for the city of Jackson. I feel it is a win for the neighborhood where this property is located, and I feel it will be a win for Aspel Recovery Center. Aspel has a great track record of success, and what we have is a property that's fallen to disrepair and dilapidated and just a drag on that neighborhood, and what we're going to have is Aspel Manor... I mean, I say Aspel Manor, I always say the old name. I can't get it out of my head, but Aspel Recovery Center is going to take this property and improve it and put it into use for housing, for people that are looking to recover from situations that they have been a part of in their life. And so we are real excited about that because it will take a property that's now a negative and make it a positive, and anytime we can be a part of that, I feel like that's a great thing, so.
Stan, you want to walk us through how we got the property?
Okay. This property was tied up in several properties that Paul Munt owned, and when Paul went into bankruptcy, JEA had a mortgage attached to this property, and they did not really want to take advantage of that mortgage. They really didn't have a use for the property, so they assigned that mortgage to the city of Jackson because with conversations that Richard had had with the mayor's office, they saw a need for this property, and we saw a way that we could be able to acquire this property and be able to put it into use again. So we had the mortgage assigned to us. Our attorneys went through that legal process of doing that, and then we foreclosed on the property, and we auctioned it on the courthouse steps, and we ended up with it because we had, you know, a value attached to it because we had a mortgage assigned. So this property was basically, we got it at no expense in terms of the city because we got it from JEA, who assigned the mortgage to us, all right? So after it was auctioned and we received, we got a deed to it in December, and now it sits before you as a property we'd like to put in Aspel Recovery Center's hands, and that pretty well outlines the process.
Okay, we thank JEA for being an ally of ours in this effort. Richard, you want to tell us how you're going to use it?
Yes, sir. Be glad to... Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
We appreciate your support over the years, and certainly with this opportunity that's presented today. Most of y'all are familiar with the Talbot Towers apartment complex there on Talbot, the corner of Talbot and Cedar. We bought that property in 2010, and you're aware of some of the challenges in that area back then. We were able to secure a federal home loan bank to purchase that. We spent $90,000 renovating it, and then we turned it into a recovery living complex. It's 26 units there. It's its own neighborhood association, it has its own officers, and it has a resident that's a member of the Aspel Recovery Center Board of Directors. Our intent is to model that Princeton property after the Talbot Towers project. Residents would have to sign on their lease they'll be alcohol and drug-free, they won't allow family or friends to bring alcohol or drugs onto the property. We'll have a resident manager there in one of the apartments. We have, as Mr. Pilot pointed out, we have a track record of success in developing affordable housing for recovering people. If you're familiar with recovery, in early recovery, there's a lot of records to clean up, and a lot of times it's financial records. It's hard for people to find an affordable place to live. And when we look at our Talbot Towers project today, we've got 12 people on a waiting list because those apartments are full. They're clean, and they're safe, and our intent is to do the same thing with the Princeton property. Thank you.
How many units in that Princeton?
It's eight units. Eight, one bedroom apartments.
That was one of my questions. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. Barber, good morning.
Good morning.
In correlation and collaboration with Jackson Drug Court, what is Aspel Manor? How do you work with them? Is anybody referred from their program?
Yes, sir, we do. As a matter of fact, I have the honor of sitting on the city of Jackson Drug Court treatment team. We did a lot of work with the city drug court.
Mayor, if I could... Are they referred to you for housing?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Mayor, if I could, good morning, Mr. Barber. Just wanted to kind of reiterate what some others have said, but the work that you do in the community is unprecedented. As a former board member and as an attorney who has referred clients to Aspel, you're really making a difference, and surely, that neighborhood has changed remarkably since Aspel has begun to acquire property in that area. So again, just want to commend you and want to support this effort.
Thank you, Councilman Brooks.
Richard, we...
Go ahead. We appreciate the work you do. I'm a church partner with Aspel, and glad to see that you're growing and providing this service. You said many times, it's not easy to raise money and provide this service to people that do a nonprofit. Glad to see that you're getting a property just right around the corner from my house. Good to see it go from what it was to what it's going to be.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. Chairman, move the transfer of 427 Princeton Street to Aspel Recovery Center.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any additional discussion?
I was just going to say, Mayor, that also, we do appreciate having Aspel as a partner in our redevelopment efforts too, because they keep their properties in very well-maintenance, and any property that they have acquired in the past, they bring it up to a level that makes it, you know, positive for the situation and positive for the neighborhood. So we are thankful for them to be a partner in our redevelopment efforts.
You can drive down Talbot Street and see the transformation.
Yes, you can.
Oh, yes.
I credit an engaged, passionate board that helps us get those resources, and a staff that really loves the neighborhood, the people we serve. Some great folks down there.
Any other comments or questions from council? We have a motion and a second, do we not? Okay, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Item four is consideration of street acceptance for Shallow Springs, Sections 5A, Water Dance Cove, Shallow Springs, and a portion of Zachary Lane.
Move the acceptance.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
Item five is consideration of street acceptance for Shallow Springs, Sections 6A, Living Waters Cove, Living Waters Drive, and a portion of Zachary Lane.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item six is consideration of street acceptance for Traditions, Sections 5 and 7, Success Cove, and portions of Hillside Landing and Hawk Metter Cove.
So moved.
Second, a motion and a second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Item seven is board appointments for the Municipal Solid Waste Planning Region Board, reappointments of Scott Conger, Pam Finn, and Bill Douglas, and the appointment of Candy Savage Campbell.
So moved.
A motion and a second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Keep Jackson Beautiful Commission, the appointment of Michael Peake.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
Okay, item eight, budget amendment.
Good morning. We have three amendments this morning. The first one that we have is to the capital account for the city hall building. Any amount of $1,008 funds are needed for a speaker upgrade in the city council meeting room. This funding is needed for new speakers and cabling. This will require a draw on the fund balance in the capital fund.
Move the approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
The second amendment that you have before you today is basically clearing up something in the... in the budget. This is in lieu of tax, water for tax equivalent, and the amount of $66,320 was budgeted in era for the water sewer count and the debt service fund, and it should have been in the general fund.
Move for approval, second.
A motion and a second. Discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
The third amendment that you have before you today is for the drug fund, the police drug fund. Funds are needed for additional expenses for drug dogs and instructors that exceeded original budget predictions. In addition, $8,500 are needed for rebuilding, redesigning one of the old jail cells to be used as storage room for the drug evidence that in the past has been maintained in the vault of the sheriff's office, but now we're being asked to maintain our own facility. Chief Michael, Chief Michaels is here to have any questions about that. The amount is $14,000.
Move to approve.
You have a motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion from counsel.
Chief, we're just doing one cell, and is there a plan for the other cells as we move forward?
The one cell that we're doing is what is considered the old drunk tank. It's a very large room. I think it'll be sufficient for quite a while. The old cells that we have down there now, we're storing old case files, and those are used for some evidence as well. But this one that we have to upgrade, put cameras and alarms on because of what's going to be in there, I think is going to be large enough and be sufficient for quite a while.
Okay. Chief, that's some pretty expensive dog food, isn't it?
That's not all dog food. It was kennels and equipment for the cars and things like that.
You know, I'm just having fun. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, additional question from counsel? If not, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
One update. I would like to report that on January the 15th, we received $222,500 in relation to the March 3rd through 5th ice storm from FEMA. So that's positive news.
Say that again.
We received $222,500, and this is in relation to the March 3rd through 5th, 2014 ice storm that we had last year. So those coffers came back into the city.
Counsel, remember, that was part of the deal for the bonus for city employees and we're gaining on that cost. Sir, I did not want to overlook you. I think you had your hand up for item under new business, and I, if you'd like to address the counsel, the item is under new business. Play.
And I'll stand if that's okay?
Sure. If you identify yourself, please. If you would identify yourself to the record.
My name is Lassana Jasper. I want to preface my comments first by noting what was said about the cameras. And as I say, I don't think the NAACP's stance on that necessarily reflects the wider sentiment of the community. If you all have noticed, we have watched as black men have been killed on camera, only to be told by our judicial systems that what we saw didn't really happen. So you'll understand why not a lot of us are overjoyed just by the idea of cameras. And if you think that cameras and equipment are the answer, you really haven't had looked at what is really the problem. In my son's case, who, as you know, was murdered by Jackson Tennessee Police, one of the officers has a history of removing his equipment. So again, that's not necessarily assurance. But again, I say I'm here today to deliver a message to you, and that message is that the way to peace is through justice, and only through justice are we going to get genuine peace. Anything short of that is a lie. It is a deception. It is denial, and it is an oppression that is destined to be overturned. I deliver that message to you in the name of my martyr's son, Sin Q Jasper, we call him Q, who on November 6, 2014, was murdered execution-style by Jackson Police. Shot in the back unarmed while he lay on the ground. Shot in the back while he lay on the ground unarmed. Multiple witnesses attest to this. Yet, all we have so far from police is what was initially, the initial misinformation that was put out. Nothing else. And so again, I make this point about why we are not confident when you talk about cameras. What we need is a structural change here. And as we stand here, it's the Black History Month. My concern is about black futures, particularly the futures of young black people, males especially, who consider making life here in Jackson. My son was regarded as obviously insignificant, a black life that didn't matter, a black life that was not connected to anyone or anything here. It mattered in the scheme of things on the plantation. They were wrong. But as I said, the only way we're going to get changed here is through justice. And as I look at history, Mayor, counsel, we see a pattern. My son's murder mirrors in a lot of ways the murder that happened here in 2007 under your watch, which again, there was lying, deception by the police, and attempt to cover up. Justice was the case, justice is the case in my son's murder. So if we think we can just get through this silently and ignoring it and doing something superficially that doesn't really address the problem, that reminds you again that you are wrong, we are not. We have to get some structural change, and it has to do with redefining what law enforcement is in the black community, in the community in general, what the expectations are, rules of engagement, because clearly you have a pattern here. Mr. Mayor, council members, many of you have been on the council for a while. As I say, this is under your watch, Mayor. This is under this local government's watch. But we have a pattern of law enforcement, questionable practices, intimidation, wrongful death, and an attempt to keep those covered up in this community. And so I'm here to deliver a message that this is not going to be covered up. I'm here to see to justice for my son, and justice for my son is justice on behalf of everyone who stands for that. So if you do, while you're doing the pledge of allegiance, you need to know that we need to be doing something more significant than cameras. So again, I say to you, peace only through justice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go down to item nine, the final item, is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Questions? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.